Go ahead and start.
Ready.
We're here for the first, the district court budget hearing, and I will turn it over to Mr. Crossland, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I don't have much to add to what I've submitted in our narrative. We are not requesting an increase for 2024. We would ask that the funding level, 2023 funding level remain as same for '24. We are satisfied with the, that level of funding. We believe we can work with that for another year. And we are still mindful of what we can't foresee necessarily, particularly in the area of jury, jury fees, and so on. That number of items we can't control. But we feel that the county, the county has authorized for us is adequate, and we would ask that that be maintained.
You agree, Judge Lowden?
I do.
Okay. Is there any questions?
Commissioners, if I could just, Steve, if you wouldn't mind, because this is kind of unique, only a portion of your services are financed through the county, if you could just really quickly talk about how your organization is mainly a state organization and a portion of it is also.
Yes. We, the judicial branch manages our activities from Topeka. They set policies that we comply with. The judicial branch pays salaries, benefits for our employees. The lone exception to that, of course, is our Judge Protem, which is, has been a long standing line item in our budget. We do, under, I think it's KSA 20349, we have operational expenses which are reflected in the local budget, and those, those items are expected, it is anticipated that the county would cover those expenses. And many of those are statutory, staturally mandated. So that, it is a unique situation, but that's the difference.
Okay. Commissioner Stephen, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on your dues and memberships. What does that involve?
Dues and memberships are for professional memberships for our employees, for the judiciary, for our court services staff, clerks. That's, those, that covers those particular.
All right. Is that typical in most counties? They have that? Or is that reimbursed in most counties?
I, they reimburse.
Like, like is that, do, do they require that the judges just pay for their, or staff pay for their own memberships in some locations? Or is that an optional thing? Or is that?
Well, perhaps it is, Commissioner. I couldn't tell you from county to county. In our county, it has been, for some time now, the commission has authorized line item for this, this expense.
Okay.
I agree. That's exactly, what you're saying is exactly correct for the subscription. That, to me, that's something that's, you know, need to keep in place. In fact, most departments need to have that in place. Sometimes they go as far as, you know, the CEUs and things like that, that some people have to, have to receive. But these dues are important to stay in with, for a lot of reasons.
I noticed your jury duty was, your budget for 2022 was 75, and you used 58. And then it came up to 100. Why, why did it go up?
Well, we were still, at the time, we had informed that budget, and we're still dealing with the COVID backlog.
Yep.
Be glad when I don't hear about that.
So we, we relied on, well, we, we were, we'd be advised by the county attorney's office, there was a number of cases that were still in the hopper, that had to be, that may have, may very well have gone, had to go to trial. And so we, we had to make our best estimate of what we required, so we wouldn't have to, if we did end up with a whole stockpile of cases, that we wouldn't have to come back over and ask for more money. So that number was agreed to for last year's budget. We still have, we haven't had a lot of cases for jury trial so far. We've called in seven juries so far, so it's been, the numbers are down right now. But there are a number of cases down the road, some of which will require, if they go to trial, perhaps up to a week, maybe longer.
We have a death penalty case that's also pending. It's so weird.
Yep. How's that going to be reimbursed? Does the state reimburse for that? Or how does that, I mean, that's very expensive.
The attorneys involved, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The attorneys involved on the defense side are compensated through bids, so that is not a county expense. But there will be other operational expenses perhaps related to that, when in fact that, that does in fact go to trial.
And just kind of, also, the, the increase that's been requested also is because we're going to pay our jurors a little bit more for their jury duty. I'm just saying.
They'll get paid now, a jury.
That people need to understand that this, that, to me, I wanted to point out that the increase that has been requested is because we're actually going to give our jurors a little bit more compensation for their time.
That is a substantial part of that. That is correct.
Yes. No, I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, that is correct.
And we're not actually requesting an increase from last year's budget.
Right.
We're keeping it the same. Part of last year's increase was because of the annual compensation. They had only been compensated $10 a day before.
Right.
I think this is, y'all did a great, great job. You looked at what we're having to deal with nowadays, inflation. I appreciate what y'all, how y'all brought this forward to us. I have no questions on this.
I don't either, because we get talked about too much, and we need an increase.
So if you don't have anything else for us, then I don't think we have anything else for you. So thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for the hard work on this.
If we have any other questions, we'll get back with you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the 2024 budget for the sheriff's office, relatively benign, in that there's no assistance requested for the coming year. It really just reflects a continuation of services at the level that we currently provide. Overall, it's a, just a little over 2% increase over 2023, a 2.7% increase. Some outline things that may, well, that definitely will affect income for 2024, is January 1st, we will be adjusting the rate at which we charge other entities to hold inmates within our jail, as a reflection of increased cost of supplies, resources, food contracts, medical contracts, that type of thing. Currently, it's $55 a day per inmate, and it will be raised to $60 per day per inmate. Again, that's beginning January 1st. And then July 1st, a new law will go into effect regarding inmates that we are holding waiting evaluation at one of the state hospitals for competency for judicial proceedings. And what that new law does is it will mandate K-Dads to reimburse the sheriff's office $100 per day, per inmate, from the moment the inmate has been ordered for evaluation. And why that's important, I think, and why that law came about is, it's not atypical for us to hold somebody waiting for evaluation for months to a year at that time. So I think the intent of this piece of legislation is to make it a quicker process, make more beds available. And I know K-Dad is responding to that. But at any given time, we probably have 10 to 12 inmates that fit that scenario. So amplify that statewide. Obviously, it's going to be a big cost, but that will be income to the general fund. I just don't have an expectation yet of what that looks like. So actually, we'll start seeing the benefit of that after July 1st this year. With that, again, it's relatively benign. You know, open to any questions you may have.
Commissioner Stephen, you have a question?
Yeah. On page one, where you talk about the 121 full-time employees, are, are there actually 121 full-time employees positions? Or is that?
I am allotted 121.
But how many, is that actually people, or what you're allotted?
That's what I am allotted currently. My staffing is 109.
Okay.
And I have several applications in process.
Okay. And let's see. Oh, and that other deal, the $50 to $60, is that regulated, the amount you can charge? Do you?
No.
So you kind of look at other counties, how they?
Look at other counties, look at populations, look at the size of the municipalities that commit to us, and fairness to them as well.
On page four, talks about prisoner health services. Then additionally, we are, have eliminated the standalone line item for prescription medication. What was that? Or what, explain that to me.
So for inmate healthcare, we would have an amount set aside for provided services, or provider services. And then there's a separate line item that covered the cost of prescriptions. We just combine the two under one, because typically, the prescription line item would exceed what we had allotted, whereas we would have a little bit remaining in these other line, line items. So we just combine the two and work out of one that way. It's, we're still able to track all medical expenses in that manner.
I just have one more. On page nine, it says on the, under jail expense, "The trend over the past few years has been steady climb exceeding the amount budgeted." Are you on target? Are you going to exceed your budget like this year?
On jail expense?
Yeah.
A lot of that is, it's hard to necessarily project where we'll be at, in that the vendors, say mattresses, at the beginning of the year, they may be $75 a mattress. Something may happen where it affects the cost of oil, whatever, they're going to increase their prices for $20 to $30 for part of the year. They may lower it again, they may not lower it. So it's hard to project exactly where we'll be at. I think we'll be okay this year.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Ted?
Do you still have any trouble getting qualified applicants?
Qualified applicants?
Yes.
Yes. There's, there's been a shortage of applicants. It's that, the qualifier of qualified. We have been, so we started a year out, I believe, 22 now. So we've been hiring steadily and making some good hires. We always see an increase right after college graduation, or high school graduation, and we were able to pick several up in that manner. We have relationships with the University of St. Mary's, where they do internships with us, and probably eight out of 10 of those individuals we hire. So we are definitely making progress. We are, we're seeing more applications than what we have typically beginning, we're from 80 to 100 a year. And that's about where we're at now. It's just a lot of the applications we get, once we make initial contact with them, schedule, you know, the next steps, they disappear into the wind. So.
Go somewhere else, yeah?
One minute.
And do you just schedule regular testing times? I mean, there's a certain time of the year you do it, or you just advertise, then when you get enough in, you?
We were open. We, you know, we would test every day if we had, had an applicant that would come in. So we have, we have made it extremely easy in this process.
Okay.
And we have revamped our process to make it more, a more quick process. So, you know, obviously, somebody looking for a job, they're looking for a job now. And to draw it out over a three or four month period serves nobody. So we've got, we've got about enough.
That's where I was going with that, yeah. One other thing, too, this may just be the way the world is right now. Officer liability insurance, that jumped $31,000. Is there a reason that that's gone up so high? Is it just in nature of the beast now? It's page one, down towards the bottom. Got 252, fine. It started at 33, 4.
92% up.
That was because they removed a different line item. The increase was a result of the clerk's office combining two line items for liability insurance into one.
That makes sense. Okay.
Because if you look down, it's.
Yeah, I did. I thought that was what they were getting ready to show me that bottom line item. That's fine. Thank you.
Plus Janet and I reached out to Riley's agency this year and got some new quotes for the liability insurances and the vehicle insurances. Some of them we raised, and some of them we lowered. And the sheriff's office was one that we told not to budget this particular line item.
Okay.
Because it was kind of a duplication of another. So we'll stand by those numbers.
I don't know if you can answer.
Jeff, you have anything?
No. So your overall increase is only 2.9%. Cost of living is probably going to be 10% or really, in actuality, more than that. You're not having issues hiring people at the salaries that you're offering?
I won't say that that's part of it, but I have to be realistic with the, with the community that we're in, you know, the pays that pay that other agencies in the community are receiving. I've said before, we're not Johnson County. We'll never be able to compete with Johnson County for the lack of pay that we're able to offer. We try to make up in other things, whether it be the environment, working conditions, opportunities that we offer in not only the office, but within Leavenworth County. I haven't had anybody try to negotiate pay before hiring them. So they're, they are accepting of where we're at. Not to say that down the road, we may need to look at making an adjustment to stay current with, with our neighboring agencies. But that has not been an issue for those who have come into the door.
Do you bring people in a different rate for certified? Or is it all just one thing, Sheriff?
We bring them in at a different rate for a couple of different reasons. If they come in as a certified, then they come in at a different level, just as a higher rate. If they come in with any type of a college education, we start them at a higher step.
Okay.
If they come in with a certain amount of experience, we try to give pay that recognizes at least a portion of that experience. So we try to.
Makes sense.
Be reflective of the, of who the applicant is.
Good job.
Questions for the sheriff?
I have no other questions.
Any questions? I think Mike should apply.
I'm a little horrified now.
Start the PT.
Andy, Andy, come here, yeah. I like it. I like it. I appreciate y'all doing this. This looks good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The 911 fund is also.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that. Yep, it's here in my next.
It's pretty, a whole lot of time on it.
I think there's not much that, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and it is what it is. I mean, it's the 911 fund. Right.
But didn't this year, 24, didn't check or request that funding would have to be made through general fund to make the budget work?
I think that that might be, but that's not.
Okay.
Hey Sheriff, just one, and I'll get off it, because I used to do the kind of stuff. Is the 911 or the P S A, is that changed over the years? Is that basically the way it's always been, as far as the way it runs and for the funding for it?
So the, our, our P S A is provided in part through Mid-America Regional Council. We are members of that. The city of Leavenworth are members of that. And Fort Leavenworth, those are the three P S As within the county. Up until last year, maybe a little bit longer, Fort Leavenworth received and managed their funds for their system. Leavenworth County received and managed the funds for both our P S A and Leavenworth City P S A. There was a decision by the city manager where they wanted to manage their own funding. And so that separated at midpoint last year, I believe, and they then handled their, their piece of it. We continue to handle our piece, and then the entirety of the radio system, which they are beneficiaries of, and they in turn reimburse expenses to us.
Any other questions?
I have nothing else.
I'll just throw one, one in here. I don't know if you heard our, I'm sure you're aware that we had that traffic study on George Road that gone from 110 cars a day to now 1,900 cars a day. Any, any concerns going forward? What actions need to be taken to make, ensure the safest outcome on that road?
Well, I think, looking at the totality of the project, had KDOT adopted a better detour, and I know that the one that I envision is probably not in alignment with what their, their policies are. But they, they know that's a heavily traveled road, and where you leave no option but to go down a two-lank gravel road with several serious bends in it. I think we leave anybody with any amount of reasonable concern. You know, going forward, I don't know if there's any benefit in having more extensive talks with KDOT, but you know, from what I've seen, they kind of do what they want to do. And as far as what the sheriff's office can do, we try to have as many officers present during that amount of time as possible. But reality is, you know, the coverage of the county, if I have four or five cars out at any given time, that's good. And they can't be here in place at, at one time. I certainly can't park somebody in a particular spot for eight hours at a time. So they, they are frequenting. They are trying to catch violators. Our main concern is this speed. But there's also the commercial vehicles that may try to use that, that could clog up traffic on a, on a turn, or that type of thing. So very much aware of it, trying to have a presence. But it's a problem that we're handled, we're handed, and I think we're just going to write it out until end of project.
Yeah, it's interesting, because we had the meeting at Helen Siltop, sponsored by KDOT, and they were aware at that meeting that we didn't want that to become the main detour. We didn't get much help from them.
But we appreciate your help.
Not the main detour, though.
We didn't.
Main detour touch you down, up to Oskaloosa.
Well, 60% of the traffic is going down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Voggs.
Thanks, Annie.
Thanks, Voggs.
I expect that the general fund, we receive about half a million revenues. This is down from previous years, but follows a continuing trend. In 2022, we expected only 750,000, and not the $1 million as expected in previous years. But we amended our budget to what was suggested by the clerk's office. But you see, our original estimate of 750 was actually more accurate. Speaking of errors, our request for $38,526.65 to be transferred in 2021 was never done. So thanks to your approval, the county commissioners' board orders actuated in 2022. We've asterisked that on our information. Getting back to this year, given our current rate of recording documents, we are expecting only half a million dollars in revenues. For this reason, we have put in for 2024 an expected income of half a million dollars. This, of course, also affects the income to the Register of Deeds Technology Fund. We have reduced the expected income accordingly in that account. We do expect to continue to receive revenue from research and copies. This fund began in 2021, when we started to charge for copies in research. It has decreased from the first year, when we first began charging, as expected, because we have more documents available online, and because, as promised, we reduced the cost since the scanning project was completed. We do expect to get new Laredo subscribers, which somewhat upsets the, offsets the decline in research fees. We are expecting $40,000 this year, and have budgeted the same for next year. Looking at our expenses, after two years, we have a much better idea of what expenses will be. We have adjusted these accordingly. We also have included a capital outlay expense, because while there is certain office equipment we can pay for through the Rod Tech Fund, we cannot do all of them. We are facing replacing our computers. They were all bought at the same time. We've had five computers that needed to be replaced in the past two years, but only placed four to try to attempt to do a cost saving. But we expect another five will need to be replaced. So while we are at a slightly higher increase in 4%, if we look at our Rod Tech Fund, we have greatly reduced our expenditures. The expenditures proposed are less than half of what was, or is expected to be spent this year. We have spent $253,179, and expect to spend another $100,000. Next year, we have a budget of $136,436. Our contacts with different service providers, such as Fiddler, have increased slightly, as expected.
$31,000.
The scanning project has gone well. The improvement in available images is amazing, and I brought something, I don't know if you can see from there, but here's what it did look like, and here's what it looks like now.
Yeah, she showed me.
So it's a, it's a great improvement. We have a constant stream of compliments from title companies who are grateful to have legible copies to work with, and not to have to arrive to our vault to do research. We have accomplished our immediate goal to have 50 years of documents searchable online, so our researchers are now able to find more documents on their own. We are receiving document images in increments of 52,000 documents at a time. So we are back indexing as quickly as possible, about 160 documents per day average. Back indexing has revealed missing segments of documents ranging from 30 pages to hundreds. So there will need to be a smaller scanning, smaller scanning project to fill in these gaps. We expect, expect to spend another $136,000 or so to have a complete online record. Are there any questions?
Okay. You were discussing replacement of computers. I'm just, I'm trying to get, and why, if you have something in the tech, the tech fund can't be used for?
It can be used for some of the computers, but not all of them.
And why is that?
Because the, the tech fund has very specific requirements on what we can use it for. And it has to be for like, research on the, on the, to simplify, for like, research on, on documents, or keeping the documents.
Okay. I'm, I'm just.
We do more than that with our computers.
I was just curious, because I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand why. Okay. I just not sure I understand why. I, I, what is, can you give me the statute of the thing for the tech fund, so that I can understand what it can and cannot be used for?
I could send you that.
Okay. I would, I'd appreciate that. No, I just, so that I can be clear as to why.
Yeah, I understand. And, and it's something that we can, we can, Terry Los can discuss with the commissioners if there's specifics on that. Yes.
Okay. And, and I was looking at, I'm just looking at, you know, the, the budget looks good. And I'll, I'll let somebody else ask a question before I continue with it. Just, Mr. Stephen?
So if I'm looking at your budget from 2019, and then trend, I'm just looking at the trends.
Yes.
In 2019, your office was spending $207,000. And now our request for this year's $286,000. I realize there's been inflation. The last two years, you got 5.6% and then 11% increase. And then we're requesting a 7.68% increase. Pretty hefty increases. Is there, if we were going to lower your, if we're going to get you down to 4%, where would you recommend that we look?
Well, I can, I can suggest one spot, because we didn't amend it, and that would be under. be under the, I think it's postage. Where we have, I have to, it's, it's a higher amount and we should actually be 1,800 because we had thought about doing a, a certain project, but Terry Los tells me, no, we're not going to do that project, so it leaves us closer to 1,800. And the other thing I would say about your percentages?
So the 50, so the, your proposal for postage is?
53,800.
The 5300?
Yeah, it should be 1,800.
Should be, so there, there's some savings.
And you'll see that, I guess it's a lot closer. And let me point out, because we have such a small budget, it doesn't take much to get the 4%, which isn't going to save you much in your overall budget. And we do make income for it.
But every little bit counts.
Yes, and we try, but we do make income for the, for the county, so don't cut us too much or you'll be losing your income.
Right, well, I mean, the state done a good job of that when they quit, we quit collecting mortgage filings.
Quit the mortgage, yes, yes.
And that was phased in, so if you look back at some of those stories, but.
So is that the only line item you, you would see that you had in Ebro?
Right, at least that she told me, so.
Okay.
What about mileage? That's, that's quite a bit. I was just.
The mileage increase, she told me, I should tell you if you had questions, she previously had lower amounts because she didn't realize what it would be, and she has not been paying for them herself where it became short, and so now she just wanted to make sure you had a true idea of what the, the costs really are.
Is that when she's using mileage there, is that for any of you officers driving around the county doing things?
It's for her doing.
Or is it for her?
It's for her doing the PFA presentations or similar public education seminars. It also includes like going out to, or I don't know if this one, because you may have the county car, but going out to training sessions.
I just had a question about recording fees. So could you explain why it's projected to be about half of what it's been over the last couple of years on the?
Because it, okay, so we can tell from what's been recorded this far that we expect it to be a half a million this year. Unless you see a change in the economy or something going on that would, that we would expect more, we're going to go with what we have for this year.
Okay.
And you can come up with reasons for that, that, that's really, we record.
What was your carryover last year? I, I don't seem to have that written down.
They don't have a carryover.
So it just stays in the same fund?
To the general fund.
General fund, okay. So there's no carryover?
There's a carryover in ROD Tech.
Yeah.
All right.
Question to the, to the point, it is very small budget, so any, any change like an increase in mileage or something, it does impact the budget percentage wise. Very drastic, they just would give it as such a small budget. That is, that is.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Simple and painless.
Not too bad. Thank you.
Can we quote you on that?
Did you order for the rower at one point?
Hey, if it's a rower, you're down to the minute, on time.
Okay.
Well, that's what we always say, you know, if the dispatcher says it'll be a minute, or it'll be five minutes, it's an hour, hour and a half.
He's here.
He's weighed left.
I don't know where he went, but he's here.
He's had enough.
Those peeps are here. Come on in, come on up.
No, no, you're up here, you're at your time.
Yep. You're here now, give me an extra chair, there's one next to me. Okay.
It's just a work session, Todd, we just thought we'd sit up here for more.
I'm going to tie my shoes.
That's what happens when you take your shoes off instead of leaving them on when you're at work, they're tight.
I know. Have to show off the black socks. Go back.
Hi, Todd, how are you?
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're just, we're going to be hearing now the budget for the county attorney's office, and go right on ahead and begin.
Oh, I, I think it's fairly self-explanatory. Probably the main thing to emphasize is that we're still working on a little bit of catch-up, and the attorney general's office, who has changed hands since the last time, has asked for additional money to continue doing their appeals. It is a great amount of time for my attorneys to use that as well as try to prepare cases and catch up, so we're still wanting, or still using the attorney general's office to use our appeals. The only other issue I think is that IT had been paying for our computer services, and so it's not really additional funding, it is just moving funds from the IT department to our department to pay for the programming that we need to have used, so. The new program, which should be live for us in November, is, is pretty much the same cost as the other program that we were using, it might be maybe a thousand dollars more or so, but relatively the same cost. Beyond that, nothing much else seems to have just normal, normal wear and tear for our office.
Questions?
Do you still have a large backlog on cases?
It's better, I mean, it's constantly getting better, but we do, yeah. So we're constantly getting through it. I think we're better than other counties, but it's still not good enough for me, so.
How many cases is that, that you're backlog?
It's about, I think we're at a point, usually you have about 300 to 400 standard that are just waiting for more information or waiting to see what's going to happen in another case, and we have about 300 or so that we're behind on, that we need to get caught up on.
So is that in addition to that 300 or 400? You have an extra 300 just sitting out here?
Yeah.
That's huge.
It is, and that's what we're fighting to get to.
I was wondering on this line item, your AG fee was added to previously budget, does the AG handling appeals, what is that AG fee?
It's, it just should be AG, the attorney general's handling the appeals. They, their price.
Is there a change in that, or?
Yeah, that's, that's what I started off with. They, they increased that by almost two times.
Okay, and you have, you were, in 2022, you were budgeted on the education and training 5,000, and you exceeded it to 9,700. You're asking for 10. What all does that involve? What all is, what all is your training? I mean, how much money are you, what are you using that for? That's gone from five, budgeted for 5,000, now it's 10,000?
Well, not only, well, with the additional attorneys needing training, the, the number has gone up because COVID is, I don't want to, gone away or however you want to phrase that, but that's allowing for more training, more specialized training, which we're hoping to have, especially with the nature of some of the cases we've had over the last couple of years.
I was looking at this, we have the five-year trend on all these departments, and when I'm looking at your department, there's been quite a substantial growth of expenditures, and it looks like about 17% of that is in personnel. Is the increase, can you explain the increase? Has it been your caseload that's required, the additional staff, or is, is this administrative staff, or is this attorneys?
Well, it's been a little bit of both. Not only, not only.
It took about 17%.
Well, some of it is just trying to be comparable with what the salaries are. We have two open positions now that we've had open for about two to three months that we cannot get hired, and I know the county's familiar with that because we had an open position for county councillor for one, two years, a year and a half, and that salary kept going up higher and higher and higher. So we're combating the same problems you guys are combating, we're trying to get people hired. We have to be competitive, and sadly, we haven't been.
And retention is important, too, of the.
Well, you can't, yeah, because you can't hire, can't hire someone for more money and not have the staff that's been there for 20, 30, 40, almost 40 years. And we're losing some of that staff, you know, now, because a lot of people are retiring, so it's trying to get the new people, get them in, hired.
Well, if I look at your, like, in 2019, the county attorney's office budget was 1,531, and the request you're making now is 2,670. There's been quite a, quite a increase. I mean, that's, that's a substantial, that's almost a million dollars.
That's right.
So, and you're, you're, we're trying to get, we're trying to get these departments to come in at 4%, and yours came in in two years for 74%.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's really hard to do these budgets.
I understand that, but I also, it's really hard to hire and keep people. It's also hard to be able to keep and maintain, you know, you, you had asked me about backlog and wanting to get the backlog down, but if I don't have the people and I can't hire them, then I can't get the backlog down. So, I mean, I'm stuck in the middle of wanting something for, for nothing. I mean, and if you look in the last five years, we've seen crime reduction go down 14% consistently every year for the last five years. Three of our cities are considered the safest cities in the entire state. A lot of that safest cities is being able to prosecute and make sure, convict and either put in jail or prison or get on probation to clear them up, and so I see the value of being able to review, process, and get through the cases and make sure you have the right people doing it, well worth the dollar, and I don't know anyone who wouldn't agree with that.
I got one question, too, and, and I just need to be educated on that. First of all, I commend you, your staff on your prosecutions. Compared to what the country's going through, when you let things that are terrible become the norm, they stay the norm. So you have, when people do the crime, they have to be prepared to do the time. And speaking of that, as far as raises goes within your department, do you, because you're trying to compete with everybody, is that, is that what you're entitled to do, is the money, handle the money the way you want as far as giving raises in case you need to keep somebody here? Is that how that works?
Right, I mean, basically the way the statute works is the county commission allocates the money to the county attorney's office, the county attorney's office decides how he or she would like to allocate that. And if we have insufficient amount of funds, then we come and tell what we have to have to be able to function for the office. And I've never flexed either muscle on any of that, I just try to be as frank as possible where we are. Even, even with what the budget says, we still have struggled with getting attorneys in, getting staff in, and so, and I think, I think the county knows this, you know, because I've seen the salaries go up for almost every office or every department head. I mean, it's, you know, if you want the quality people, you have to be able to pay them the quality, quality wage.
Let me ask you one more thing, and Mark, this is just for education for me, in a city I never had to deal with when I was out there. When people are fined through the, the system, the courts, where do those fines go?
It either goes to general fund or goes to the state.
Okay, is there a percentage breakdown on that, or does it depend on the crime? Or does it depend on?
I mean, there's core costs, there's, I mean, I'm not sure the question, it, we don't, this, my office does not see any of those funds, if that's the question.
Yeah, I was wondering, see, that went to back, back to the, the county fund itself, not you, but I didn't know how, if we're prosecuting and we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing, the fund's not coming back to the county to offset some of the expenses?
The only, the only funds that come back is diversion, and I try to keep a very steady regimented fund for that, so that no one has any bias in what, what we charge, so I haven't, I moved it up when I initially got elected. At this point, I still think it's rather fair. I try to also give opportunities to, though, the underprivileged that have other.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Pay for diversion as in community service or something, if they want to do that. To be mindful that, you know, a lot of the funds that we see, but, so it might offset in the general fund to a degree, but it doesn't offset, it doesn't, I never see any benefit out of it, which is, which is good, because if I was giving diversion to got money out of it, I think it would look.
No, I just think the overall cost, when you, when you got the state making us do something, which is, it should be, but there should be some funds always coming back. It seems like the county, no matter what county in Kansas, is always the last one to receive additional funds for things that we have to do. Thanks, thank you, you answered it.
So administrative staff and attorneys, what's your numbers? How many, how many attorneys do you have in your office?
At this time, I have, I have nine allocated, seven attorneys. I will have one starting next week, so I'll have eight. And then I have about, about 15 staff.
So, so how many, how many administrative staff?
About 15.
15 others? And does that compare, is that pretty comparable to what you had in 2022?
Relatively, besides the attorneys, we asked for additional funding for the attorneys.
And that was, was that, that was when you came in and asked for COVID money for the attorneys?
Yes.
And, and we're just now filling those attorneys now?
Yeah, we were still working on filling those.
So the administrative staff level, if, if you were going to make adjustments to the budget, are, are there any administrative staff that could be adjusted? Could we adjust those numbers down?
You wanted me to give a pay cut to people I'm trying to keep hired?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm asking if there's any room in your budget to adjust the administrative staff level? So there's no room in your budget to adjust the administrative staff at all?
I mean, no, I mean, you're basically either implying I either need to pay less or fire someone, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking every single person that comes in here, is there any place in their budget that there's any room at all to make any adjustments? And I'm asking that to everybody that comes in here. Is there any place in your budget, if we had to make adjustments, that you would recommend that we made those adjustments?
No, I mean, I.
I'm confused on what you're saying. If, I guess the, and I'm not phrasing it right, is there anywhere in your budget that if we had to make cuts or changes to the rate of increase, is there anywhere you would recommend that we look?
A different department? I mean.
So you don't have, with this, with this, so the number is?
I've been as bare bones as possible for as long as possible. Obviously, and, I mean, even by 2019 standards, I was underpaying, and when the county decided to increase funding for everybody else, it made it real hard for those who've been working for me for 20 to 30 years to want to stay in the office and not look to go to a different department, so.
So in two years, your, your budget went from 1,885, and now you're requesting 2,670 in two years. Do you think that's sustainable for the county?
Well, I'm hoping not, I mean, I'm hoping just to do the continued, some of that, some of the major increases is the recommended 4% increase or the cost of living that we're doing for either, any of the staff, so that was like, the major increase that I have is just due to the, the cost of living.
Well, the, comparing to other departments, I mean, I'm looking at all the other departments, your, your increase is substantially higher that you're requesting, and I understand there's, there's legal requirements and there's COVID backlog and there's all these things, but when we're talking about this amount of money and this amount of an increase. but when we're talking about this amount of money and this amount of an increase, I think at one time we were in here, and one of the words that was used was unsustainable. And how, how do we get a handle on this, that it's not going to continue to increase like this?
Well, I mean, as time goes on, we're going to have cost of living increases. So, I mean, and we have, I mean, I have some of the best attorneys you could imagine in the entire state.
I believe you do. I don't question that.
I mean, I have some that have twenty, ten, twenty years of experience handling a capital murder case, handling multiple murder cases. So, the idea of trying to eliminate anybody to not be as efficient as we, and effective as we have been, I can't imagine doing that. I mean, it's, we're already taxed as we are. So, and I'm trying to make sure I continue to be competitive within, within the county. So, I mean...
Well, I understand that, but can you understand when people are reading a budget and they're looking at the numbers, that they're, they're having questions?
Well, I'm answering the questions.
And you're, you're answering the questions, but you're not giving me anywhere at all in your budget, at all. There's nowhere that any kind of adjustment could be made to your budget at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Todd, you hit something.
Todd, I got a question about, on contractual line item two-ten communications.
Yes.
So, you're saving two hundred, over $200,000 from way you operated before. Is that, is this CARPOL?
Yeah, that was the one-time purchase.
Okay. And that's the, is that the old HTE system that you used to have?
Well, it was the KPS system, the full case, full court. The, the state mandated that everyone change. We were one of the last ones to have to, have to change. And so, we went with the company that has at least fifty to sixty other counties that are also using it, so...
Okay. So, in the, in the narrative, it said, "Our office has signed a contract with CARPOL so that the cost will be covered in the twenty-three budget." That really means twenty-four budget, right? Okay. So, you're not going back to...
You, I think you guys already allocated the money. It's just that's, we, we're not complete with the contract. It's not done until November.
Got it. Okay. That's all I have.
I don't have anything.
I just have one question for Todd, just because we have had conversations in the past. And I believe that I somewhat admonished you a little bit about the fact that for way too long, you were not adequately funding your department, that you were not paying your attorneys. And, and because, I mean, the quality of attorneys that you're going to get or keep is going to be based on what we have available to pay to them. And I think that you kind of had lamented to me that, you know, you needed, and it's like, when have you asked? And, and so, I just kind of, we had a conversation, and it was kind of a real, very frank and, and open conversation about the fact that, that you had inadvertently and not intentionally, had really kind of negatively impacted your own department by not asking for what you needed to run the department. Am I, is this, do you recall?
It's true. I, I, I mean, I may have for years just kind of kept it very low, and then, and finally just said, I, well, finally, because my staff said, "We need to have the same funding as the rest of the county." It's, it's pretty bad when, you know, I can make the environment great, and we do great things, and we help the community, and we keep it safe, and that's, you know, that's my core goal. And I think everybody in my office enjoys that aspect of what we're doing. But, I mean, if you're not even competitive with the rest of the county, and we're still not competitive with the rest of the county, but at least I, I was able to help them and get some more money. And that's...
But you're also not competitive or weren't with other counties per attorneys for the different judicial districts.
Yeah.
And, and you were losing, you know, you lost a training ground, get somebody that's new, and then they can go right on over to the adjoining counties and, and be paid a higher wage. Am I correct?
Oh, a hundred percent. I mean, and that's been, and I mean, I have lost an attorney in another county who's gotten a substantial pay increase compared to what we're paying. I think all the other counties, or at least the districts, are probably paying a little bit better, if not better. And the benefit I can give them is, is what, what I can here. But, yes, we have been stifled, unstifled about hiring. And you couple that with the lack of people going to law school now, it's, it's made it even more competitive. I was talking to civil firms the other day, and they struggle, you know, and they're paying way more than we're paying.
I just wanted to kind of clarify just a little bit, that some of this increase is reflected in the fact that in order to maintain the, your current level of prosecutions and the, the safety and all the things that you hit addressed that we have been accomplishing is kind of contingent upon the level and the quality of the people we have over in the county attorney's office.
I appreciate it. It is, it is true. I mean, we have, we have some of the best attorneys, and I don't just say that. And I know that they're often at conferences, whatever, asked to go to a different county, and the only thing I can say is they, they like the environment more, and the pay is sufficient. I mean, it's not great, it's sufficient. And I want to actually make it well enough that they feel great about being here, too, because they love Leavenworth County.
And you do have a great environment in your...
I appreciate that.
...for your operations. I was just, I just kind of wanted to just clarify that just a little bit, because it is, it is, I think that it's correct. There has been a substantial increase in, in your budget. However, I think that, that we owe it to the public to also point out that Todd has tried very hard over the years to keep things at a minimum, minimum, almost to the, well, not almost, to the detriment of his own department. So...
Todd, I had one thing, too, though. I appreciate in the past that you've, you've cut back before I was even here, or something like that. But honestly, when you need something, you, you need to be doing what you're doing now. You need to make sure it gets in front of us, because then when it, when it does come due, that we have to, we have to make it, make it up. So, when you need attorneys, or when you need the salary, something like that, make sure it's in every budget so we can look at it. Because when you get, if you don't do it that way, then we look at a seventy percent, things, something like that. You, you understand how that looks to everybody. But at the same time, I have no criticism whatsoever of your, of your staff. I've, I read the paper, I talk to them, and I see what's going on. And I'm very proud that Leavenworth County is doing the things that the rest of the nation should be as far as that office.
And I appreciate that. And I, I, I'll be honest, I mean, I come here every year for the last few years and hear how much the increase was from, from, as Mike was saying, sorry, Commissioner was saying. And I, I hear each, each year, and it's because I spent so many years not doing it, and now, you know...
That's what caught my attention.
Well, and that's, that's, I mean, it's just...
That's you. You're trying, you're trying to be, trying to be the good guy, and now all of a sudden, making up for it.
No, and every year, I get to hear about it. So, you know...
You're welcome.
So, I have a question. What do you bring in a new attorney? What's their salary?
Depends, their level of experience.
I mean, what's typical?
Depends their level of experience.
Okay, well...
Straight, straight out of law school, they're paying probably anywhere from around sixty. I think Johnson County's paying sixty-eight for, for an attorney, so I have to kind of compete with what, I don't try to compete with what Johnson County is, but at this, you know, somewhere around sixty or so. And then upwards till, I mean, depending on the years of experience, on up, coming up to ninety. I don't think we have anybody over that, but I haven't hired anybody. I don't think, well, maybe around ninety, at twenty years' experience or so.
Okay.
Still, I mean, that's far low than what Johnson, Windon, Douglas is paying.
Yeah, it is.
It's just, you know, and, and I don't want you to take it wrong, because I, I respect everything you do. But, but we're in a position here, we're trying to figure out a budget. It's just like a family sitting around a table and trying to figure out, you know, are we going to budget for vacation? Are we going to budget for this? Are we going to budget for that?
Well, Mike, we're going to put you, we're going to put you up for adoption. Okay.
But, but it's, I mean, it's not, this is not an easy job, and then we're looking at each department.
Well, I, I get it, but, you know, the way I see it is, I am not paying them what they should be paid. I'm, I mean, I'm not even paid competitive to what other offices are being paid. And I, I can only do as much to make them happy and give them a place that they feel like is home, and that they feel like they can get the job done and, and do it well. And that's, that's the environment, is the best I can do. Leavenworth is the, is the best. It's, you know, and our county attorney's office, I mean, we have six interns right now, and they all really wanted to come into this, this very office because the environment and what we're able to provide them, that other offices don't give them that focus. And so, there's a lot of benefit, but sadly, they, they have to be paid less than what they're, you know, being paid. And I come to, you know, this family table, and, and I get hit with, I'm, you know, paying them too much, and I'm not paying them as much as I, I should be paying them.
I don't think, I, no, for one, I'm not saying you're paying them too much, but we have road and bridge people, they're not paid what they're paid in Johnson County. And we have people in almost every department that we're hearing the exact same thing. So, it's not, you're not alone. We, and there's just limited resources.
I understand.
My attorney's office is probably not going to be self-sufficient and run off with buy or diversion fees.
No.
That won't occur.
Well, and I, and I hope, you know, whether you look at whatever, you know, the fact that I didn't give increases for a long period of time, and now I, you know, trying to play catch-up, and it makes it look worse for me, that, you know, whatever it is.
It's not just your department.
I don't, I don't get to sit and listen to everybody.
Well, it's, you worked here when, or you was the county attorney when we had to do the five percent reduction, flat budget, and five percent increase.
For several years, not just one.
Yeah. The only deal, though, we could figure out was going five on increases.
Yeah.
It was lean years.
But we're seeing crime reduction still, so that's a nice thing. Knock wood. I say that, and then something happens.
Can't walk out the door.
Yeah, I hate saying it, but...
As long as it happens, it gets prosecuted.
Apparently, if I have to do it in front of a microphone, that's probably one of the times I can jinx this. If we read the papers tomorrow, I'm sorry.
If you have any, anybody have any other questions in the county attorney's office, then we will let you go back to county attorneying.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Twenty-five. Ready to roll.
Let's move on to the treasurer's office.
Come on down. This don't look good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
If you don't know Jennifer Scharbeck, she's my deputy. I think you all know her by now. I'm not really sure where to start with right away, because we operate out of two budgets, a state motor vehicle budget and a county, a county budget. Early in the budget process, Mr. Lawfree asked us to submit information about unfunded mandates. And what I've provided to you is information on the motor vehicle fund, which is underfunded. It's a state fund and underfunded. And there, the county treasurers have, their association has prepared Senate Bill Ninety. And that bill would rewrite how we fund the motor vehicle side of the treasurer's office. That's been before the legislature several times, and it just doesn't go anywhere. It, I think last year, it passed the House, but it didn't pass the Senate.
Welcome to our world.
Exactly, exactly. And I know that you're dealing with a lot of unfunded mandates by the state, so that's why I kind of wanted to bring this up to you, because this is really going to affect you in the future if they don't change the way that they fund the treasurer's office, because this has a direct impact on the county treasurer's office and, and the fund for that, the general fund. I've attached several letters in that packet that I gave you from various commissioners, the KAC, and even the Department of Revenue itself stating that county treasurer's offices are underfunded, and how much things have changed over the years. When we first got this, the motor vehicle system that we have right now in 2013, I was not in twelve, it came in in twelve, I came into the office in thirteen, and the treasurers then realized how much that change in, in the software systems reduced their revenue. And I don't know if it's programming, I don't know what the problem was, but it dramatically reduced the revenue that was coming into the treasurer's office. So, in 2013, the legislature passed a bill which allowed us to provide a facility fee. That facility fee charges, is actually at the discretion of the county treasurer, between one dollar and five dollar based on what the budgetary needs are. And that was in 2013. In 2013, I added a one-dollar facility fee for every title transaction. Since then, in an, in an effort to fund the motor vehicle fund, I've had to go up to five dollars per transaction, per title transaction.
Are you, do you have discretion on that, or are you...
Yes, yes.
So, how, is there a top?
Five dollars is the top.
Okay.
And I've had to gradually work up to that to be able to fund that, to fund our motor vehicle department. And it still is basically not sustainable. So, unless the state does something to change the funding mechanism of the, of the motor vehicle side, that's probably going to have to fall onto the Adalorm County side. I have put in for an increase of five percent contribution of thirty, of thirty percent of our overall costs for the motor vehicle side, because they do county work as well. It's very intermingled. Normally, the county funds the motor vehicle side at twenty-five percent because they do tax payments, they work on the tax roll. So, it's very intermingled, but up to this point, they have funded the motor vehicle side twenty-five percent. And because of the lack of funding from the state, I've asked for an increase of five percent, which would be thirty percent of overall salaries and employee benefits. Sure.
So, a portion of their employees, large portion, are one hundred percent funded in motor vehicle.
Yes.
And then there's another portion that are primarily funded in general fund, and then the county contributes currently twenty-five percent towards the motor vehicle staff, because some of the work they do is kept in general fund or whatever. And that, that's already happening. That's how it works right now. What she's pointing out is that she's asking to increase that contribution percentage by five percent.
And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. It's so intermingled, but, so anyway, on the motor vehicle side, I have reduced that, although it shows a five percent increase. I have two full-time employees, I've reduced that by two full-time employees. So, we can do that because a lot of our, a lot of our transactions have gone to online.
Yeah.
I don't know how long that will last, but I think because of the facility fee, people have figured out that if they come in, they're going to charge, get charged five dollars more. So, our onlines have increased, which also increases our postage, because when we have those onlines, we've got to mail out the registrations. So, it's kind of a catch-22 for us. But it's, it's really hard to talk about the county treasurer general fund if you're not looking at the motor vehicle fund, which the state funds. So, I've probably confused you, but if there's anything, any questions I can answer, just feel free to ask.
So, the legislature is against user fees, I guess?
I don't know that they're against user fees, but if they, if they change...
The user fees aren't enough.
I'm sorry?
The user fees aren't enough.
The user fees aren't enough, but I think what the problem with the legislature is, is when they, if they revise this to one, one ten-dollar flat fee, it readjusts everything else, and they will not get the four-dollar modernization fee that they've been charging everybody for years since we installed this new, I call it movers, it's not new, it's we've had it new, we've had it for thirteen years, but they were collecting it prior to underground back, prior to the installation of the software. And they've just continued to collect that, but this proposal would eliminate that money that they're getting on that modernization fee. And it would come to the county treasurers rather than to the state. So, I'm sure that's probably why it's, it's not being...
Well, it just makes more sense. If you buy a lot of vehicles, title a lot of vehicles, it should be a user fee.
Commissioner's about, ten, eleven years ago, I was actually on the Treasury side at that time, but we did a study with this, and over there, some of the cities provide some... but we did a study with this, and over there, some of the cities provide services. And we did a study on what it takes for the average interaction, like when somebody wants to, the interaction in the service. And at that time, 10 years ago, $5 was the minimum that we felt would cover the cost of an interaction. And they were allowing us to charge like $1.50, so that was the argument. Pretty similar to what you see here, is that 10 years ago, it should have been $5, it was $1. They've now moved it up to $5, but it really should be $10, and because 10 years ago, it was $5.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think that it's what the treasurer's association is trying to do, which is to get that fee to $10 so that, I think that probably comes closer to actually covering the cost of doing, of doing business up the state.
Right, and it would be a statewide fee to where, right now, different counties are charging different amounts based on what their budgetary needs are. Of course, the larger counties like us, we have to go with the $5 fee, and it's still really not enough to carry the budget. Even after reducing by two full-time employees.
Mrs. Chairman?
Go ahead, sorry.
So your budget, yours is a little more complicated because you've got all these mixtures of funds.
Right.
But in 2019, the treasurer's office was 407-805, and last year it was 579, and this year, you're asking for 643, which is a 10% increase over the two years. So I'll ask you the same question I asked the last person. Is there, if we were trying to get that 10% down, is there anywhere in this budget you would look?
Well, the only thing I could do is reduce personnel, and I've done that by two full-time employees already. The increase is due to the 6% that we gave mid-year last year, and then the proposed 3% possibly in January. So, and of course, inflationary costs for supplies.
Okay, and I will give you a compliment, I'll give you, I'll give you a compliment. I'm hearing a lot of good report, I mean, when COVID was going on, it was really hard.
It was very hard.
And people, lots of complaints, I'm getting a lot of good reports about your office.
Well, thank you, thank you.
So we appreciate what you're doing.
And I'd like to recognize Jennifer that. Jennifer really runs the day-to-day operations, me and my deputy. I do a lot of the other things, like the county investments, the personnel budgeting, accounts payable, the things that nobody really sees, but she, she's kind of my out-front person, and she's doing a wonderful job, so.
I agree, even when we had snail mail, it took 30 days for my property tax to get here from Lansing. I went down there, they even let me, they even let me in the office, so I appreciate the help on that.
I think they were walking at that time.
Yeah, exactly.
And you know, we're just under the gun kind of on this budget, so.
I understand, but I think you'd be interested to know, I wrote this little tip down, that last year, we, we collected 111,688,671 receipts, tax receipts. Now, that's, that's all kinds of taxes, that's the link, but that's current, that's, that's everything, but that just shows you the massive amount of work that is done in our office, just on the, on the county general's side. And so there's a lot of work that goes on in there, and I just, I have a great staff, so I think I should pay tribute to them.
Any questions for James?
Annual tax statements, so the difference in '22, '23, '24, the $30,000.
Uh, yeah, I had always budgeted it in the county general fund because it's, it's a county general function to send out the annual tax statements, but when I could, I paid for it out of the technology fund, because it, it reduces the stress on the general fund, and it's not a, it's not a, you know, the technology fund is not a levied fund, so that's all comes in from fees. For some reason, those fees have dropped off about 50%.
Do we know why?
I don't know why. Those fees are based on registrations out of the register of deeds office, filings, document filings. And we would normally bring in about $40,000, and, and, but, even the clerk, the clerk gets about the same amount. Just in the last year or two, couple of years, that's been reduced about 50%. And I don't know why, because I feel like probably the, there's still, you know, mortgages, and I, you know, there's a lot of real estate moving, and so I don't know why that has reduced the 50%, but that just means that I can't pay for the county tax pay, uh, county tax statements out of that fund.
Okay.
Mark, is there any?
So I think when the register of deeds office is just up here, they mentioned that they believe their recording fees are going to be about half what they have been in the past.
Well, there's probably nobody refinancing to a higher interest rate.
Well, I'm sure that, I'm sure that is.
Pretty darn sure they're pretty sure of that.
So the fees, you know, it, it made it easier to go online, so a lot of people do it.
But as far as anybody refinancing their house or anything, that's another part.
Hmm, okay.
But our, you know, and interest rates are higher, so our county investments are doing well.
I see that.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
But.
So are our expenses.
Exactly.
Does anybody have questions on the budget, because we've got the other areas to, you know, kind of all intermingled this, Janice said, it's.
Yeah.
Sounds like the legislature could fix part of this on user fees.
Yeah, that'll take about three years.
Maybe.
That's if it's implied.
Yes, yes. And, and that is included in the '24 budget, the reduction of those two. I, if you'll see, I have open window here, and I have open window at Tongi, so I've reduced that by two full-time employees.
Thank you for giving the presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have an unrelated, just, just a, because I was reading all these things and people, and we had some questions, queries from other county commissioners, and it's just a, and so it's not, I am not recommending going to a four-day work week. Did you guys read all those screens?
There's a lot of them.
Conversations that have been going on at the county levels, and I think that Riley, or Garrett County, one of the two was looking at.
Yeah, somebody's board, somebody.
I can't remember.
Yeah, so I was just curious. Have you guys all ever had those discussions? Well, I could ask over there.
We have talked about it, you know, I don't know that it would actually save any money in our office. I think it would, I think it would be a disadvantage for the customers who need to come in, especially before, you know, the first of the month to get their tags done.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's disadvantages and disadvantages, but I think for the sake of the public, we probably need to.
Yeah, no, I just, because people were saying that, that like for the treasurer's office, that people could have more hours, that they could get there instead of.
And you could probably even.
I was just curious, it was just.
Kind of split your staff.
Lengthening the day.
Yeah, it takes more than a day.
And you could even split your staff, like you'd have Monday through Thursday, and then Tuesday through Friday.
I think the problem that you see is that the state doesn't work off a four-day work.
Right.
So then if we ever had to reach out to them, we'd only have the eight hours to do it and not the.
Not the 10, yeah, no, I was just curious, because that was the thing, and I wasn't commenting, I was just reading all of the, the stream of responses, and so I was just curious, that was.
No, we, we talked about it, thought it'd really be great.
The counties that have tried that, most of them have not been successful, they've gone back, they've gone back to the other, especially all the, all the divisions you have within it, so.
I think like 20 years ago, that was a big thing.
Yeah.
At the government level.
Yeah.
It went around, and nobody really took it out, but there's, there's savings, but it's the, everyone costs.
That's, that's the key.
Yeah, I was just curious, and that, because all of the things can, and I just had noted that they had, a lot of them had said, we did it, but we don't anymore, so it's.
I think what they're seeing is not maybe even reduction in cost as much as the benefit of being able to recruit, because people like the idea of having a three-day work week. When we went and went to the Panasonic, they talked about their work schedule.
Right.
And they're, they're a world, a global group, and their staff overwhelmingly supports working longer days and having more days off, so they do a three-on, four-off, four-on, three-off rotation. So basically, their staff is off half a year plus than the holidays and the other stuff. So they, they work, days-wise, they work less than half a year, and their staff loves that.
Well, I've heard them discussing that too, that's why I said, I was curious.
Julie Fire Department, you can, you can do this three.
That's a, that's a fireman's schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I was just curious.
Without the 24.
Yeah.
Without the 24 part.
Just curious, that was, it's not.
An hour is just a long day, though.
Yeah.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Now we have human resources, come on down. How are you, Monica?
Join the fun.
Great. Hello, hi, Monica. This will be super easy compared to a lot of the other ones that you've talked to.
Will be.
Okay, not easy, maybe a little simpler. Being in HR for years, I know that we're a support role, and that no matter what organization I've been in, we don't, we, my department has never like been an income-producing or a public-facing department, and so I've always been taught to run as lean as possible. And so with that, in my first year here, we did eliminate one of the roles in my office. I didn't feel that that was, was needed, we're able to run efficiently and take care of the 430-plus county employees with the three of us that are there, and so that did reduce my, my budget a little bit, and the personnel. I left the payroll expenses the same as it was last year, but I am anticipating a decrease in that this upcoming year as well, with the new system that we went live with today.
I like the numbers.
That was today. So far, so good.
That's right, today was the day.
Today's live day for Paylocity, and it has gone well, and everyone is clocking in. I, I was absolutely pleased that all of our employees registered in a timely manner, and.
Well, you got ahead of this quite a bit, I mean, you've been, you've been putting this out there for a while to get.
A little bit, but I felt like we could have even done more, but I, everyone responded so well, and I wasn't, actually, I was ready for there to be a handful of people that weren't ready today, and everyone's clocking in, the managers are doing great, looking at the time cards, and, oh, so it's, it's gone, we'll cross our fingers, so far without a hitch today.
Any questions for Monica?
I don't have any questions.
We are looking at something very efficient, chief, and what was the, what were the needs of?
I see the bottom numbers.
Yeah, well, we'll continue to look at that, so I've got Jenna and Ashley all the time, always looking at ways that we can maybe, you know, reduce costs, and after I have a few years here, we can see where this is.
I like the way it's been run now, standing alone, I think that was a smart move.
Mr. Chairman, while it's not necessarily part of Monica's budget, I did watch this year, I think it'd be a good time to talk about, that last year, we transitioned from our, kind of our benefits coordinator provider, and we went to Bucati Group, and the changes that they're making, long-term, we will see a difference. Now, it's hard to say, oh, yeah, look at those big savings we have when the cost of our insurance went up, but what they proposed our insurance to go up versus what it's actually going up? You know, our, that's directly related to what Bucati is doing for us. You know, instead of going up 14%, you know, now we have a proposal of 5%.
Amazing.
And that was the negotiation process that they handled for us, and we're able to go make the argument because they're monitoring our use. Some of the other changes that they're implementing, or, or working with us, the staff to implement, are going to reap long-term benefits to the county. We just had a presentation earlier this week about some of our smaller benefits that we don't really think about. You know, we always think about the big health care, but dental, vision, some of the other stuff that we're looking at is, they're evaluating too, and some of it, it's not even county expenses. I think you mentioned, like, we have the, the employee-paid benefits for short-term disability or hospitalization. That's 100% on the employee, but Bucati took a look at it and said, hey, look, there may be a way that your employees could get the same benefit for less money, let's take a look at it. And again, no, that's not a benefit to the county per se, but it is a benefit to our employees. And they're just doing a lot of those things, working through Monica, and really happy with the services we're getting there. But also, I think you're going to see, long-term, that helps us maintain our expenses, if not reduce them.
That's good, great.
Yeah, I agree.
It's creating that, that place that draws good talent, and we utilize the money the best we can to.
For years, I've been trying to implement some, like, we monitor the usage of our health insurance, and we talk to people about, you're doing this, but there's this other benefit over here that you could use. And some of it is people who are, well, and once they've started watching it, is people who are not utilizing their benefit. So you maybe have a, like me, maybe I have a I+ roll, I'll use myself because I'm safe doing that, I'm not sharing anything that I can't. I have I+ roll, so I take a daily Libitor or Simvastatin, which is a generic. If I wasn't getting that prescription refill, they would reach out to me and say, hey, we noticed you have this prescription, but you're not using it, which is going to create long-term health problems for you down the line, which then we have to pay for with our insurance.
Yeah.
How about if we work with you on getting compliant with the usage of your, so those are the kinds of things that they look at. And they're also helping us with some other incentive programs to encourage employees to take advantage of health screening. You know, we do that annual health screen, the county pays for 100%, not a lot of places do that, and it's a great screen. And we have probably less than 30% of our employees who take part in that. So those are things that they're working with us to help us figure out how to incentivize more employees to do that, because we're, we want to keep our, our workforce healthy, and we want them to have a full life by maintaining their health. But how do we encourage them to do that without just absolutely forcing them to do it?
We can't make that mandatory?
Well, we've talked about that, so we're.
What was that?
Like a mandatory to do the health screening?
We're, we're absolutely looking into everything that we can. First, we're going to try the carrot, and then if we have to, we'll look at this. Just again, super happy with the, with the direction that they're going and the way they're working with our HR staff. I think Monica would probably say that it's, not that she was here for a long time before without the Bucati Group, but that the things that are happening down there are what a true HR department really would like to see out of HR.
Good, good.
Yeah, I'm really excited to, to be a part of the next few years as.
I still have one thing to pick with you. Bill cannot cook at the chili contest this year. You have to keep an eye on him, okay?
He's a lot.
CC.
Yeah, but definitely going to have rules in place.
For Bill, Bill is your watching.
He's going to be haunted by that forever.
Okay.
So we're off budget.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And yay.
Good morning.
I think we have an empty.
We retired too soon, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It what?
We have a break now, so.
Tell, when do we reserve?
Well, three years when it's all wasted.